It is 6:35 and this is the Planning and Zoning Commission, Red Oak, Texas, regular meeting, Monday, October 4th, 2021. We have present here Commissioners, myself, Leroy Clies, Vice Chair, Kim Campbell, Secretary, present, Scott Lindsey, member, present, and James McLean, member, is online via Zoom. We also have Brian Gunsel here as the Planning and Zoning Manager for Red Oak City Staff, and Ben Hartman will be joining us shortly. So we have a quorum here, present, and it looks like our first item here is Consent Agenda. These are all items listed, considered to be routine by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a Commissioner or Citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered in its normal sequence. Approval of the Consent Agenda operates as the administrative official or designee in place to place each item on the City Council Agenda in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. We have here A, which is the minutes for our last two meetings. We have a motion to approve these?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second. Motion by Kim, second by Scott.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That's in favor, right? Thanks. That takes us to new business.
I can barely hear you guys, but...
James, you approved of that Consent Agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. This takes us to new business. Which is Planning and Zoning Agenda Item B. Conduct a public hearing and consider amending planned development zoning district PD 27R with a development plan for single-family houses to include neighborhood amenities and open spaces on approximately 14 acres on Lot 2, Block A of the Emerson addition, further described as being generally west of Hickory Creek Drive in the city of Red Oak, Texas, case Z is in zebra 21031 requested by Naveen Kamampati. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this case may seem familiar, as though you just saw it last month, as you did. So I won't belabor all the details, but basically has changed, you may have noticed in your memo, is the provision to provide for more parking. That did require a few minor site changes, such as the drive connection to Hickory Creek Drive, as well as those edge parking spaces that's a park in on the internal street. But other than that, and then needed to shift the lots where before it was a 50/50 mix, it's the 50 and 60s, and now there's one more 50-foot lot instead of 60-foot lot to just make this work. So it's just the one lot difference. Other than that, it's the same. So, you know, visual here, just so people may be zooming in, can see what it is referred to. So that drive connection to Hickory Creek, parking's here, and parking off the internal street is Oxford, as well as some parking here around the park, and then some parallel parking on North Haven. So, really, I think with that, I'll stop talking. If y'all have questions, happy to answer it. And the thing, Naveen, is on the line. Okay. Is this something added by council or anything, or was this something that...
Right, so at council, it was voted down as it had been presented. And this does, by the way, keeps the garage stuff y'all asked for.
Okay.
And so council feedback was largely based on parking, so they have to immediately resubmitted.
Okay.
Again, we don't have, some cities do the prejudice language, so they were free to come immediately back with a new submission.
Okay. I know we had some questions about it in that last meeting, but we weren't really sure. Okay. Okay. So this is a public hearing, and so what we'll have is an opportunity for those that are in favor of the item to speak, state your name and address, tell us why you're in favor of the item, and then after that, we'll have an opportunity for those that oppose the item to state their name and address, and why they're opposed to the item. So the first thing we'll do is start off with those that are for this item, if you'd like to come forward and state your name and address, let us know.
Good evening, Commissioners, this is Naveen. I hope everybody can hear me.
Yes, Naveen.
This is Naveen Kamampati, 2770 Main Street, number 171, Frisco, Texas, 75033. We presented this case last month, and we discussed this project in detail. I think, I think we had a, like, animated view of the entire project, and it was discussed inland. I think Commissioners passed this unanimously, and we went to the City Council. I mean, City Council did like the project, but they were opposing because we didn't have parking. So we added some additional parking, like Brian said, about 43 parking spaces. And then, right now, we're in front of you, this is just a minor change, all the other lots remaining the same, except we added like 1 50-foot lot, and 1 60-foot lot is reduced. But the total number of lots remain the same. I'm in favor of this project. Any questions? Please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Naveen. Is there anyone else who is, would like to speak in favor of this item? Is there anybody opposed to this item, and you'd like to state your name and address? Nobody opposed. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Aye, second.
Okay. Scott made a motion to close the meeting, and Kim seconded a little bit faster than James. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, my internet sucks, and I can barely hear you guys.
Okay. I'll try to speak louder. We all approve to close the meeting. Any discussion on this item?
I don't have any, you know, problem with it. I saw what the issue that the council had with it, and I agree, and I appreciate District Naveen bringing that back as quickly as he did. Looks like a project, and I'm fine.
A pretty good deal, 45 parking spaces for just one lot that went from 60 to 50. That's pretty good planning. So we'll have a motion to approve this item? Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Aye, second.
Okay, we've got Scott with approving, and James with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? This motion, this Agenda item is approved. And Vice Chair, the next item for the, very glad to say, you don't need to have a public hearing. Okay. I'm getting there. Great, great work here. This is Planning and Zoning Agenda Item C, which is consider approving the preliminary plat for the related planned development zoning district PD 27R for a single-family development on approximately 14 acres on Lot 2, Block A of the Emerson addition, further described as being generally west of Hickory Creek Drive in the city of Red Oak, Texas, case P is in Paul 21026 requested by Naveen Kamampati. So the reply, so final files will still come, ask you again. So no public hearing for this one. We don't have any discussion on this item? Item C? We have a motion to approve? Item C?
Aye.
Is that James approving?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? This motion, this Agenda item is approved. Thank you, Naveen.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
This takes us to Planning and Zoning Agenda Item D, which is a public hearing to consider amending planned development zoning district PD 77, R is in Ray 2, to provide additional uses based on highway-oriented and commercial 1, C1 zoning, including but not limited to medical offices and fitness centers, and other uses as may be approved on approximately 2.1 acres at 300 North Sheriff Avenue, further described as approximately 2.1 acres of Lot 3, Block A, Avila Corner 2, in the city of Red Oak, Texas, case Z is in zebra 21033 requested by Tom DeCiso. Chico. Thank you, thank you.
So, I mean, this is probably one of the easier-to-know areas, not far from the Walmart there at the northeast corner of 35, Avila Road. It's in a planned development, generally known as Planned Development 77. It's been through multiple amendments, provisions. The orange boundary here is just to note that what we're talking about, sign only applies to this portion of the PD, this property, that I'm trying to check out. Oh, okay. Sorry. And so the orange boundary just represents the property that he owns. And the issue is just that, when they set up this PD, that simply says retail and restaurants, there's not an actual listed use. And so for staff, we would prefer to go with a list of uses from our zoning code rather than running the risk of making interpretations, which we have a duty to make some interpretations, but when something just says retail, that's really broad, right? So we, staff, or I work with Tom, and we pulled from basically the C1 and highway-oriented districts, and we kind of pulled out all the stuff that would make no sense, and limited that scale. So in the report, there was kind of a comparison, so the PD 77 is what was proposed to add, as being for a specific use permit, so even that use would still require it to come back for you for approval, and P being permitted. And I didn't really do the X prohibited, I just didn't include any of them prohibited. And then I gave you the comparison to highway-oriented and commercial 1, because from what I understand in reading through the code, it looks like the highway-oriented district, while very similar to the commercial 1, I think, this is me guessing here, I don't know this for a fact, but it looks to me like they are trying to say, we want to really encourage the big-box development, and not let little development get in the way. And so some uses like, like, for example, a fitness center, is not allowed in highway-oriented. I'm thinking, again, I'm guessing here, looking at it, probably the thinking was, we don't want, say, an LA Fitness, big-box, large-scale fitness center, because, well, that's almost as big as a medium-sized grocery store, or something, that could really mess up maybe a family house. But what this case was instigated on was Hot Works, which is a 2,000-square-foot fitness center, yoga, aerobics-type outfit, that would go into one of the suites in a building that's already there. So if you do approve this, it would be approving that fitness center, that would normally be allowed in a highway-oriented area, but again, my guess is it was more about keeping the large format from messing up a plant. The other thing to note is y'all may remember that we had talked several months ago about alternative retail, so that's not obviously brought back a code amendment, so what that has meant is, anything that we were kind of discussing as being all retail, such as CBD and vape and tobacco and such, would might fall under all retail, and so for now, I'm treating that as a different kind of use, and so those are not allowed. However, as I mentioned in a meeting, I had already given approval for a CO for one of Tom's tenants months ago, I think it was, I forget the name, Bay, Maven, or something like that, so vape store, but like I said, that was my cutoff. So after that approval, I'm saying, no more until we do a code amendment, or you only say, well, we're okay, and then it's fine, we'll open it up again, but for now, those are coming through. But so in this, it's not so much that you're specifically giving approval for vape or CBD or anything like that, just want to kind of recognize that, that CO has been approved for that use, but if we were to adopt an all-retail code amendment, and that were to be defined under it, then it would basically just be grandfathered. They wouldn't have to go away, it's just that, you know, if someone else wanted to buy out the business six months after that, that closed, it wouldn't be that grandfathered right. But other than that, everything's pretty simple and straightforward, generally just supporting commercial, retail, restaurant-type spaces. It did put some red changes in here. Home improvement store is kind of broadly defined in our ordinance, so I just changed this to no outside storage, because I imagine if somebody did like a really small, kind of almost boutique-ish hardware like that, I guess a carpentry company, I want to say Rockwall, but that's not it, has a blue-colored license, sorry, I can't remember the name of it, but they might be considered hardware, but they're, they would only take up like maybe 1,500 to 2,000 square foot in a retail strip, so I wanted to leave room for something like that to go in, but yeah, obviously Home Depot's not going to fit the strip center, no outside storage, you wouldn't need. And then just clarifying on the laundry, it'd be handy to have a place to pick up and drop off dry cleaning, whatnot, but just to make sure it's clear that it's not a plant, or someone trying to do anything chemical, which again, wouldn't probably be practiced in a district fairytale. And the green in here was just representing what he already had, and the yellow was what he had coming in, and then that office position, I can't remember if I just made this point 10 minutes ago, but the office position use is not something that would normally be allowed in highway-oriented, but it's already there now. Or, sorry, it would have been quality, it would have been, it's just, under the restaurant retail, a dental operation is not considered retail, based not to a city planner. That would be considered more of a neighborhood service or a professional service, not a retail operation. So this way also, it, they don't have to, neither Tom or his tenant would have to have any concern about the status of the zoning compliance, that would make them compliant. So that's really it, so what we'll, if y'all were to approve this, or with any changes, but the basic idea is we would take the current PD on file, and just add this use chart to it, it doesn't change the form of anything, the parking requirements, it still has the code in there, so, I mean, he still has to be mindful of, do I have enough parking for my next use, just when I ran out of space to the tenant, so it doesn't change anything about that. With that, I'll conclude my presentation, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Good detail on this, and so what we have here is a public hearing, and so if there's anyone who would like to, either in favor of this item, this is an opportunity for you to come forward and state your name and address, or you're for it.
Is this the spot?
Aye.
My name's Tom DeChico, 6546, where I read Drive and Downs, 240. I'm the developer of the property. And clarification, so that building's filled up. Answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. DeChico.
DeChico.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of this item? Anyone want to speak against this item? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
A second.
Okay, Scott made a motion to close the public hearing, and Kim snuck past James for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? The public hearing's been closed. Do we have any discussion on this item?
I have a question.
Go ahead, James.
So, I want to make sure, staff, that I understand, staff, in this particular case, we are granting permission for the possibility of a CBD vape store, but only in that particular case, because you guys previously approved that. Am I correct?
I guess, to try to be clear, I've already signed off on the certificate of documents to be approved for that, so it's, so that's occurred, that event has occurred prior to this zoning ordinance, so it'll effectively be grandfathered.
Okay.
And so depending what happens with all retail, it's still going to be grandfathered.
Right, but it would not, it would not include anyone else that wanted to do the same in that particular area, correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Nothing else that we would have previously discussed, is generally being, under all retail, would I be approving a CO for, in that strip center or anywhere else?
Okay. I'm done, Leroy.
Okay. Thank you, James. Thank you, Brian. Any other discussion on this item? Do we have a motion to approve Item D?
I'll make a motion, we approve Item D as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay. Scott made a motion to approve, and James seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? It's been approved. Thank you, Mr. DeChico.
Go if you want, or something. Okay.
Popcorn ready?
That didn't work this afternoon.
Okay, we have P and Z out of E. Conduct a public hearing and consider changing the zoning from highway-oriented HO to a planned development PD based on HO uses and district standards, to allow for modifications of district standards, including but not limited to sign height, setback, and effective area, and providing the use of a truck stop and related accessory uses, including but not limited to restaurants, retail, fuel cells, charging stations, and automotive and/or truck repairs, and other uses as may be approved, at 200 South Interstate Highway, 35 East, further described as being approximately 7.3 acres in 161 MD Bullion Survey Abstract, city of Red Oak, Texas, case Z 21030 requested by Mohammed El Chahimi.
So, the area is currently zoned highway-oriented. We would consider this a legal non-conforming or grandfathered type of use site. We don't have a truck stop definition, hence that's why, we don't craft it one for their PD ordinance. I did share with them also before, so they've had a chance to look at it as well. And it's one of the things, you know, about a truck stop, is, I mean, it may have a restaurant with a drive-thru, and it may have a retail component, the gas station, but it does, from a planning perspective, start to take on a different scale of scope than, say, a QuickTrip or a 7-Eleven, or a Buc-E's. I mean, you know, kind of, there's a certain scale, a certain demographic and everything that comes with it. And so again, from the planning perspective, that's why, is what they're proposing, really a truck stop, and that's a whole nother animal, and so we may want to look at that a little differently than just a normal convenience store. But they are, again, to what they have, I mean, they do have a legal non-conforming right to keep, maintain, and improve upon what they have, and that's what they've also been doing, you may have noticed, they've been fixing up the place the past year. Some stuff to point out is, you know, across the street, we have our undeveloped highway-oriented lot by Mr. Leva with, to the east is a city-owned property, cell towers, down here are some apartments, and then next door is a hotel, obviously, the interstate to the west side. The submitted development plan, landscape plan, the color rendering does a pretty good job of trying to help illustrate what some of all that is going to look like, there are a few minor differences to point out, but again, that renders really, to me, illustratively helpful. The one thing I guess to say is, overall, say, on the landscaping, there was, I think the plan, there was a few little minor variations from standard code, but all in all, it's probably washed, you know, they're certainly providing all the trees and shrubs, and so overall, actually, landscaping area, the, I believe, the Wendy's would be here on the north side of the building with the drive-thru, so there would be a drive-thru, that would be mine. They have talked about, I guess, kind of, beyond, I guess, just the idea of the scope of a truck stop, the two things that really kind of ask sort of a deviation from the normal rules, one would be the sign that's over here near the interstate, and then the other would be the truck repair station. The truck repair station, actually, it has several bays, I think someone self-explanatory, there is some elevation in the plans, trying to meet the machinery requirement, all those things, and to look complimentary. Then on the signs, the, the normal requirement is 50 feet as a max on the interstate, and the, there's a setback requirement also, so, and what they call an effective sign area requirement. So normally, on the interstate, you shouldn't be more than 50 feet tall, you shouldn't have more than 300 square feet of effective sign area. So basically, if you just imagine, you've got sort of like, you know, your shell sign, and the pie sign, and the blingy sign, you add all that up, that's effective area. And so they, they're asking for more height, they're asking for 85 feet, I believe they're about 62 feet tall approximately at the moment, and the effective sign area, I forget the number now, but it was over 400 square feet, and like I said, the max is 300. If you have a 300 square foot effective area with a 50-foot sign, you need to be setback 25 feet. They have talked about, I guess, kind of beyond, I guess, just the idea of the scope of a truck stop, the two things that really kind of ask sort of a deviation from the normal rules, one would be the sign that's over here near the interstate, and then the other would be the truck repair station. The truck repair station, I understand, it has several phases, I think somewhat self-explanatory, there is some elevation in the plans, trying to meet the masonry requirement, all those things to look complimentary. Then on the signs, the normal requirement is fifty feet as a max on the interstate. And there's a setback requirement also, so, and what they call an effective sign area requirement. So normally, on the interstate, you shouldn't be more than fifty feet tall, you shouldn't have more than three hundred square foot effective sign area. So basically, if you just imagine, you've got sort of like, you know, your shell sign and the pie sign and the landing sign, you add all that up, that's effective area. And so they're asking for more height, they're asking for eighty-five feet, I believe they're about sixty-two feet tall approximately at the moment. And the effective sign area, I forget the number now, but it was over four hundred square feet, and like I said, the max is three hundred. If you have a three hundred square foot effective area with a fifty-foot sign, you'd need to be set back twenty-five feet. So the way this is set up, the leading edge of the sign would basically be at the right-of-way and property line. Now, the pole may be set back, but the leading edge would not be. Normally, how we've been interpreting it is that, you know, we're going with the leading edge to keep it safe distance from the edge of the right-of-way. Granted, I mean, this thing's pretty tall, and so I don't know that someone's going to, you know, it's different when it's say on the middle road and you're worried about a truck turning and clipping the underhang of the sign, that's obviously not the case. But you still might have a concern though that the leading edge is that close. That stop certainly would have an issue if it ever went past it. Don't know what their requirements are, if they require to keep this from it, so. The, there's a pretty significant detention bond, but, you know, they propose to clad it with some stone work, press it up on a very prominent corner. Oh, that's, sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, so the, so we've also talked a fair amount about what needs to happen on adjacent property, so definitely would need the masonry wall, the residential, and the truck stop. At the hotel, I think we talked about the decorative.
Right, right.
Still in development?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Q and O. Oh, that's a letter.
Yeah, a letter.
Okay. Who is for six foot, ornamental iron, that's a masonry screen.
Correct.
It's a decorative metal running.
That's between the hotel?
Right, between the hotel and the kind of more commercial oriented, brought it with black decorative, and then it gets to the residential portion, the multifamily there, change the masonry, and then it wraps around, goes on the shared lot line with the city, they're doing black, auto-coded chain link. So basically, here is where you have your decorative metal, here is where you have your masonry. Our thoughts on the tap were to try to discourage people from moving through there on foot. If we're going to move there, but to get them to go out towards the street where it's more lit and just more easily see. They happily comply with that request.
Hey, Brian.
Yeah?
I have a couple of questions. Did we talk about that now or once we close it?
Well, I guess let's leave y'all with questions for a little bit, at least, I guess, let me and I just try to kind of wrap up the staff part of this real quick, and we'll let you guys have your chance.
I couldn't tell who was talking, I'm sorry.
No, no problem, no problem. So these are elevations of the repair shop that we mentioned on the site, again, meeting the masonry requirements. This is the remodel for the, where they, what, where they would add the Wendy's and the convenience store, they've got the screening around the mechanicals on the roof. And so it's, they say a remodel of the existing building. And so they've got two signs, the mid-rise and high-rise, how they refer to them. The mid-rise signs wouldn't really be an issue. This one, the high-rise sign, it's an issue in the sense that it's very different than zoning codes allow for it, but of course, it's the PD, you can always weigh these things and make your recommendations and however you want to approach it. Like I said, it's currently sixty-two feet tall now. So they do, for the structure, also have a grandfathered right to the existing structure. There is kind of a point, though, where you can lose that grandfathering right, you know, so the PD would need to be clear of what overall MAC height they would, could be provided for the effective sign area, if it's different than what they proposed. They go with what they propose, and we'll certainly just work that into the work. And then the, the renders, the illustration certainly helps to visualize the site. I would just point out some stuff that, you know, on the development plan, they show the sidewalk, still need to have a sidewalk, it just wasn't shown here, but just wanted to make sure y'all knew that on Davist, the development plan does show a sidewalk along Davist coming into the site. And I'm not sure about the three lane deal. But anyways, that does help to give a visual feel for the scope and scale of what this might be like. The other thing is Tesla charging stations, one of the things is, while this is going to have all the scope and scale and intensity of the truck stop, they do also envision trying to attract buses and RVs as well, and of course, bringing in the Tesla charging stations to those other travelers that are dependent on that. Based on General Motors' recent announcement today, it sounds like there'll be a lot more travelers who'll, other manufacturers only start to keep looking, it's going to get interesting. That's probably maybe a good image to kind of leave it on for visual reference after the site pretty well. Is that a, have you been making this one up or no?
Some of the elements that are out there right now, they're going to dress up a little such as the awning poles, they're going to cloud up the stones, it's a little kind of enhance the entire, you know, looking field of the site, it's going to match the stones that they're adding on the building, I think it's nice. Like, and that's really it, unless you have this question.
So one thing I'll say real quick was, since we did talk with the African data email briefly on this, included in our conversation, but just to share with y'all, because y'all may want to talk some about it, is that the definition that has the idea of short-term parking for trucks being less than twenty-four hours. The idea is normally a truck stop, bikes, you know, it always depends on the nature of the truck, it's kind of different, too. Some of them do offer long-term parking and service and revenue stream, that can certainly be important to truckers, they do. But I just took the liberty of putting that into that, and y'all agree to change or modify anything in that definition, because it doesn't suit you one way or the other. That was just me kind of looking at our thought plan and looking at what we've been doing, it came to me that short-term twenty-four hour parking should be fine. Y'all call it long-term, I don't live here, I don't get a vote. But I would say that, you know, that if they're doing the truck repair and that gets approved, that, I mean, I would think common sense would dictate if somebody's waiting on parts for five days to park, that we're not going to take them, that's not the intent here. That's all.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah? This is a public hearing. And so again, this is an opportunity for those who are in favor of the item to come forward and state their name and address, and while they're in favor of this item, would like to open that up?
Yeah, okay.
Or do we have anything to read?
Go ahead, I'll get it downloaded.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, so my name is Mohammed Sharaf.
Hi.
Work at Retron Energy, I had development there. Family-owned company, been living here my entire life. I am very excited to represent Mohammed El Chahimi and the El Chahimi family on the remodel, upgrade, refresh of formerly what was called the Non-Superstop, now probably called the Red Oak Travel Center. So thank you, Brian, and then, as always, it has been awesome to work with. And we're really excited because for various reasons, you know, this is in our location that, you know, we considered it our store, family store, I worked here when I was a little kid, pretty much everybody in our community worked here as kids. But, you know, it's an older truck stop that we purchased in nineteen ninety-four, did some upgrades and renovations in about two thousand and two, and so we've been working for a long time, and we're really excited because we feel extremely confident that we've done everything that we can and brought in everything we can from the investment and different use and services perspective to absolutely maximize the property for us, for citizens, for travelers, for members. So I actually, most of my time at my job, I spent presenting or working to get convenience stores or truck stops approved. I've never done one in Red Oak, so it's kind of why I'm excited for me to come here and do that as a change of pace for the other retail projects and so on that we've done. So if I can kind of again, and do you want me to just kind of tell you one quick story? Yeah, so really briefly, yeah, fly through the El Chahimis, the Red Oak family, so they're right here behind me, so two of them in the middle is graduating, that picture isn't here, but the three brothers, Khaled, Lucan, and Joseph are. And on the left, we see, it's not an OSHA violation, it's just a nice picture taken. Khaled is a little kid, he's one behind me, twenty or so years ago, doing some work in the store. So we're proud and excited, and one of the things I always like to tell folks is, we like to think that we have the scale and the capital and the ability of a large company, but we're still very much in our culture of how we act, how we travel in our stores, you know, family-owned and operated company, and the El Chahimi, a hundred percent, family owns it and they're going to keep owning it for a long time. So again, as I mentioned before, the location was purchased in two thousand and two, the minor remodeling was done in two thousand and four, and then we added a couple of restaurants. One of the first big setbacks to the next slide, and probably the most significant kind of detriment that ever happened there was, as you guys know, living in the community that used to be a two-way road, that is a photo from two thousand and nine, and you can actually see, if you look closely, a truck going in what would today be the wrong direction, and it was probably called a major accident, a truck to do that. So as you can imagine, our business is almost entirely based on highway transport, whether it's trucks, folks coming from Boston or the border, wherever, RVs, buses, you name it. And so particularly when that happened and as the years progressed, you know, that had an extremely significant negative impact on the location. And I think we take great pride in the fact that here and our other stores, particularly here, it is a truck stop, it's a travel center, we do have truck parking, showers, diesel, so on, but in no way, in my opinion, is it run or operated or looked like, you know, the other truck stops on my world, the TA or the, whatever that you usually see. So we very much know and understand that there's kind of a stigma, you know, around that kind of business, but we always believe that any business run like the three D hours, run like the family business can provide an excellent service for the city while also not being in any way, you know, a detriment. So, and of course, one of, if not the biggest reason that we're coming and asking for, amongst other things, the expanded high-rise sign, is the fact that today, we are entirely dependent on more done businesses, and we've done everything that we can from rebranding the stores, adding restaurants, to try and bolster the local community and get folks to kind of come and be in the stores. Everybody we employ is a resident of the city of Red Oak, but as you guys can imagine, there's so much that we can do, and we know that wasn't the city of Red Oak or the P and Z of council who members' decision to make that a one-way road, that was fixed on, but we think that that's something, essentially working with the city, you know, we could help to correct for and get back to where we need to be. We go to the next slide. Here's a current picture, I'm sure kind of all the folks know it, I know that Mr. El Chahimi is proud to count many folks in that city staff being, being counted as customers and friends. Here's what it'd be in twenty twenty-one, y'all seen the picture, the next photo is what we're proposing for it to be. So we are not, as some folks do, coming and showing pretty pictures that we're never going to sort of actually do, it's in the PD, this is the drawing, we have time, leased with Wendy's, and if we get approved, we're going to execute, so this would be precisely what we would be happy to develop and remodel, and any other suggestions or thoughts that the city has for what we can do to make it better. Obviously, we're sometimes a little bit confined, you know, in terms of develop and make the most of, you know, a twenty-five-year-old building, but we really think with the addition of a restaurant that is present in the city with its right-to, and a full remodel, what we're also not showing in here, that we don't have yet, is a remodel of the inside and of the restaurant area that would really make it, you know, completely first-class. So a rundown of some of the new additions, one, the addition of a thirty-five hundred square foot Wendy's restaurant, it's going to have eighty seats, it's a full menu, it's not express, whatever kind of location. On average, they hire twenty-five to thirty full-time employees, you can bet they will be Red Oak Mobile employees, we have the high school right behind us, and they would be projected to make two million dollars, provide two million dollars in additional flexible sales over that of the five-five shop and of the subway. Very often, whenever we come and we develop travel centers and we're bringing two, three, five million dollars or more projected sales, we often come to the cities and ask for some kind of rebate or incentive on sales taxes or rebate, make sure that we do not want to ask or comment about anything like that. We have an existing business, we're very proud of it, and all of that is, you know, we're very proud to provide it. One of the big changes and differences is we would be changing the gas pumps, again, if you all remember, it's kind of the very old style, two pumps, kind of back-to-back, pretty hard to get in, get out, very close to the store, we don't have any parking spots in front of the store, so we want to modernize it by doing the modern dive-in style of pump. And the other kind of exciting thing that we would be doing is we would be adding E-zero fuel. So in this day and age, increasingly, alternative types of fuels are more and more popular, and so boats or race cars or lawnmowers or special type of vehicles, if people are just car enthusiasts that want the absolute best kind of fuel for their vehicles, Buc-E's famously has ethanol-free, that's going to be available and that's going to be sold there. There are no other gas stations in Ellis County, or to my knowledge, twenty or thirty miles that has the service, folks from all over are going to be coming to us, coming to the city, to be getting their specialty fuel. Eight Tesla Superchargers, so Retron Energy, we're extremely proud to, in addition to being a fuel distributor, we are actually the largest Tesla supercharging partner in the state of Texas, the tech and largest is HEB. So in at least one way, we are bigger and larger than HEB. So in at least one way, we are bigger and larger than ATVs. I wish they would come to Red Oak Black and T Square and get off their hiney, but that's another issue. So this would be, there are Tesla superchargers in Italy. And then the next closest location is in North Dallas. And so we would be the only Tesla superchargers where more or less they're kind of exclusive convenience store and gas partners in Texas in the entire South Dallas and Ellis County areas. As you all know, you know, the HEBs and especially the popularity of Tesla's upcoming. The way that these superchargers work, these are the kind of advanced chargers where a standard charger that you might find anywhere on the road, like a mall or something, will take about an hour, parts 20 miles for your car. This one charges about 250 miles for in about 30 minutes. And so it's going to be a service. And if you're driving in person, whenever you're low on power, it's going to automatically guide you there and tell you, this is where you need to stop. And so we think, and we're trying to do everything that we can in terms of services and amenities to just prepare for the future. So we're renovating, expanding the outdoor seating area and the dock park. We have an existing dock park, but of course, with the Wendy's, we're going to basically solve by adding like a little dog wash facility and have outdoor picnic tables and everything like that. And then finally, expanded parking both for autos. You guys could see, you know, that front area that's currently a gravel area where that would all be paved. And then, of course, in the back, we're going to add space for, take it, go from about 32 to approximately 55 truck parking spaces. And then potentially a truck repair facility. So we've spoken to City Fairmount about this very often in our businesses. If you look at truck stops or travel centers that have diesel, most of the locations often have a truck repair center on site. We do not currently have plans to build one. However, we thought now is the time. We want to be coming and sort of presenting a holistic picture of everything we want to do. Sure, y'all don't want us to, we don't want to be coming back here to over and over matching and requesting different things. So we wanted to really try and present, you know, the grand vision and hear from y'all which I like, which I don't like. Yeah, we could work together to come in on it. And I'm going to show a couple more pictures, the next slide. One though, I do want to say that, again, several of our competitors, you know, Love, TA, whomever, they very often, if you look at their business, usually 70 to 80% of their volume of their income comes from diesel, like entirety of their business. We very purposely try to design our stores and work it so that the diesel is usually somewhere between 30 to 40% of our business. So yes, important, yes, we like to income from the parking, the diesel and so on. But if you look at where we're putting the money, we're putting in just as much in the restaurant, the gas area and the superchargers, expanding the gas parking, critical to us in the business of the locals and residents of Red Oak and the families and the commuters traveling on I-35. Another example, we're proposing, we have, I believe, currently three showers in the location. We are proposing expansion remodel. We'll go up to four. If you go to a typical pilot or Love, they have on average from 10 to 16 showers. And so we are in a sense a truck stop. We have truck parking, truck fueling. But we need a scale and kind of our core customers do remain different. We're a little bit more of a boutique, almost, kind of store. So the elevations, Brian showed it to you guys earlier, front to back, so on. As I said, we really try to work with the city, whether it's landscaping, putting in sidewalks, making sure every part of it has stone and masonry and did everything we can to, you know, only get you guys excited and make it hopefully an easier. So next slide, please. This one, I think, if we could spend a quick second on. So I know that, I'm perfectly aware that when we come, we see truck stops, all kinds of horrible images of, you know, smokestacks and so on, kind of conjured in folks' minds. And so I asked the architects to put together a rendering and elevation of Caliber and to kind of use that as a prototype and as an example. Of course, the Caliber was approved and built right in front of the apartment complex that we own. And the Caliber, you know, I took this straight from the PD. We tried to use some of the same colors, some of the same materials. They've got, I guess, that's five bays and an office. We initially had the close three, but there's a little bit of customization from the staff. We brought it down to two. We made sure to put it, we made sure to put it as far as we can into the back of the property and landscape as best possible so that nobody but a truck driver knows there. But we do have, you know, a nice office kind of in the middle, a two-bay location. And of course, unlike the Caliber, we will be serving trucks and semi-autos. But again, I don't think that it's huge industrial scale or anything like that. A couple of pictures, please. A couple of examples. So Southern Firemore is a company, we don't have anything done yet, but it's a company we're talking to and have worked with on some other projects. So this is a location they have in Bryant, right outside of College Station. Kind of gives you an idea. On the right is the Speedco, which is a Love's kind of brand of truck shop that was approved there in Denton, Texas. So I kind of wanted to show two cities that are, I think, somewhat similar to Red Oak in terms of their, on a highway and population and geographic stuff. I like the one on the left. I'm not that crazy about the one on the right. But I think the one that we're presenting looks more like the one on the left. And a little bit of just kind of information and thinking about, I totally understand that, you know, as members of the commission or council or the staff, you only think about the future of the city. And once you approve it, in theory, this is what we have forever. So as you all probably know, especially with the COVID pandemic, the increase in the rise in demand for industrial real estate and growth of our housing as well as e-commerce has absolutely boomed. On the left, I've got a graph where you can see in 2020 how the demand plummeted for gasoline, but it could stay pretty much steady and is projected to continue increasing for diesel. Over the next 10 or 15 years, most of the research seems to show that gas demand will begin to decline 1% or 2% a year, but diesel demand will continue to increase 2% or 3% a year. And so I know that the city and industrial development corporation, my opinion, has done a great job of kind of being smart and bringing industrial, making it nice, making the quality of the Triumph and Google and Compass and so on. And we're trying to bring that same attitude. It's something that's needed. It's a service it's provided. But my opinion, we can do it nice, of extremely high quality and of course, locally owned and operated. And then on the right, you see, it doesn't show, but of course, that real tall graph of all the industrial construction happening here in Ellis forward. And so in my opinion, this is something that's happening. It's coming. And the city thinking or working with folks like us to embrace it and kind of make the most of it that we can, in my opinion, is the right strategy moving forward. The last slide is, oh, second to last slide, I suppose. Sorry again if you can't see that, but maybe somewhat of an interesting graph. So if you look right below I-20 on I-35, you have 38,000 trucks. And then the area of Red Oak with 342 intersects I-35 is 21,000 trucks. That's the truck volume a day, not the auto volume a day. 38,000 trucks is like an unheard of number in the entirety of the United States. You can count on one hand how many parts of the road there are anywhere in the country that has that many trucks on it. We don't necessarily want all of those trucks coming onto our business. There's like 50 truck parks that we have. However, in my opinion, I-35 and what it is is an asset. The community can be an asset for us. We want to take advantage of the asset. If we have 40,000 trucks going by, we don't necessarily want them going and paying sales tax and providing businesses to another city. We want at least some of them, the right kind of folks to come by and spend time with us. So that did. I think I've got one more, just like thank you type of slide. And thank you all very much for your time. Me and of course, the owners and some of the folks on our development team are here and happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Yes. I think that, I guess, I guess it's time to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharah. A large group of people here and proof of the side of it. If you want to come up and speak, you're welcome to. We certainly recognize at least about 10 people here, workers and... Is there anyone opposed to this item? Did you have an email or something you were talking about, Brian? Or is that a different item? We have a motion to close this poll here?
Motion to close.
Second?
A second.
Okay.
A second.
Scott with a motion to close and James with a second. All in favor?
I, um...
Go ahead, James.
Well, I have a couple of things I want to talk to the commissioners about in regards to the remodeling of the truck stop. Is now the perfect time?
Sure. Go ahead, James.
Okay. I live right behind there. I shop here. I love this. My only concern, and maybe Mr. Shari or someone can talk this about, is the increased traffic coming in is coming through the town, coming through Dobbs. And just on Thursday, I was forced to back up as the truck come around the corner. In the rendering, it shows three lanes that are going to be coming down Dobbs. Is that just the rendering or is that some proposal that is being planned to widen it for the trucks to come around that corner?
That's just the rendering. We did mention, and I think it shows the development plan, where we do the permitting for all this work. We would have to do a flat at that time. They would dedicate some right-of-way. And that right-of-way would be enough to put in a three-lane roadway, 39 foot back to back. But at this time, there's no plans to construct that with this project or in any kind of CIP project for the city.
Okay. And also, right...
Yeah, I think I wanted to just add something real quick. Go ahead.
Yes, hopefully you can hear me, Mr. McLean. I also want to add a neglected to mention, and if you're full of the site plans, you can see it, we brokered, city's agreed on adding a secondary access point. Something, especially whenever we build a location, kind of ground up, we really try our utmost to completely separate the auto and the truck traffic for, you know, precisely the reasons that you mentioned. We never want them sort of getting in the way of each other. And so we've agreed, and I believe that, you know, we shouldn't have a problem building it immediately, that we would put, you can see there to the east, further in along Dobbs, a truck access. And so trucks would now be able to enter the property, you know, from that kind of eastern entrance. And we're expecting almost all of the trucks to be able to, we would want to enter through there and would hopefully dramatically reduce the amount of trucks entering that first access point. I imagine that may be where you had that issue.
Right. Well, it was at the corner of the service road in Dobbs. And then the, right in front of Oak Tree Estates, we've repaired, well, the city has had to repair that road. And I took some photos and I sent it to staff to show where the pressure of the trucks coming through there is, there was a traffic counter put for the possibility of strifting that road. Was that? Do you guys have that information?
We did put out a traffic counter just to kind of see what it was, but it wasn't, it didn't delineate between trucks and regular vehicles. We just got basically axle count. And it was just a pretty basic count that is probably exactly what you'd expect. It's kind of busy in the morning and kind of busy around 5 o'clock. And that was about it. I did send those over to the engineering team that is putting this all together for them. So I don't know if they looked into it anymore than just reviewing that data.
Because I have some photos of how Dobbs is cracking up right there now. And I'm just wondering, with more increased traffic, are we going to have more issues with that? I know for a fight, living in Oak Tree Estates, that that's been repaired at least twice a year.
Currently, we have no capital improvements program that would allow us to tell you when or when they would be, or when funding would be available to redo Dobbs Road. My assumption is that as the area develops, there will become a need for it when the large piece of land that is owned by Cleveland Liebowitz just to the north of this, if it develops as the city envisions of a large retail center, it will likely come with some pretty substantial improvements to Dobbs Road. But for what you're talking about right now, we should just basically consider routine maintenance of streets for the city that our public works team would handle or sub out to different contractors. Hey, James, thank you for bringing that up. I know Red Oak Road has had some repairs done on it as well. So it's just, that's just kind of a common thing we have to deal with, it looks like. And it looks like they can go down to the next exit if they wanted to and flip around that nice overpass and come back if they wanted to. If they didn't want to come over the bridge, Red Oak Road, they could go down to 77 and flip around there and come back up if they wanted to.
Well, that's what we're running into. I think most of the traffic coming southbound is coming across Red Oak and around Dobbs through there.
Yeah, our counters that we put out did not delineate between towards the traffic or what. So we would have to look at that, what kind of detriment. Actually counted up and took a picture at the same time to go back and have more specific data that delineates the amount of axles crossing it that are actually trucks and non-vehicle.
Okay. And another item I want to discuss was about the sign.
Go ahead, James.
Yeah, the sign, I don't know if anyone's driven I-35 north going through Lancaster. They got signs all over the place. The one thing nice right now about going through Red Oak is there's a consistency just like coming down the south side of DeSoto. I actually took some pictures and I sent them to staff to kind of show that where we need to be consistent with our signs. My thought is that if we have a guidance that we stick similar to it, because if you look at where their sign is versus Tazian's, then Tazian's, not saying that they do, may want to raise theirs up because you can't see theirs. So I just want to make sure that when we do something like this, that we're being consistent. And if possible, if staff could show the photos that I took in Lancaster of how that looks. I definitely don't want Red Oak to look like that.
James, are you ready? Did you say you want me to show the photos?
Yes, please.
There's quite a few. Is there a particular one or?
I, I'm on my phone. I can't. The group photo from, from, looks like Beltline Road, where it shows all the signs all over the place with the power lines to up and down.
I'll just quickly cycle through if people get...
Okay. Oh, I didn't see any of it. Are they showing?
Yes. Yeah, I just finished showing them.
Okay.
Got a sense of what you're referring to.
Well, and that's just my concern. I, as long as we're consistent and we're not doing something along that line and that we're within the, our guidelines as far as the setbacks sides, I just want to make sure that we stay consistent as we grow and as the other developments come across the street as well as up in, um, the shopping center, we want to be consistent and not all over the place like Lancaster is, for example.
But, and, and you mentioned Hagan, just so you, so P M D knows, specifically mentioned them, uh, months ago, and we're exactly when, a month ago, when Hagan was applying for a sign permit, they had asked if they could be taller. And I said, well, the rule's fifty foot, if you want taller, you need to measure P B and ask P M D and council if you could. And I said, eh, okay, never mind. And so they went with the fifty foot height sign, so we just, uh, James, I mentioned it, so I mean, at one time they had one, you know, if, if I could've, they probably would've.
Because I'm on a different screen, and, and what is, what is this one proposed? What, how, how high is it?
Uh, they're proposing eighty-five feet.
What is the sign currently today? Sixty-two?
Sixty-two ish.
Hey, guys, and my, my concern was with it, is that their elevation is already high. If you look across the street, they're in a gully. So, we, I guess, we understand, I mean, those commissioners and staff have to come up with something that's going to be fair with something that's raised up twenty feet versus something that's down thirty feet.
But they had the right to, to make that same request, is that correct, Ron? Hagan?
Yeah.
And they chose not to.
Right.
I don't think we can hold that against people that, because someone else chooses not to, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, okay, uh, we, I'm kidding myself, I forgot to include it. When I was a picture of you since then, but we did not take out a number out of a half of those eight or five people who drove and took pictures of when you're on thirty-five or, uh, what high, kind of minimum height can you go to see in time to go to safety exit, and that's how we arrived at that.
And, and that makes, that makes perfect sense to me because I, I was looking, you know, that's, that's obviously a completely different situation than you have on the other side of the highway as far as height, uh, and, and I was looking at that as, with this proposal and trying to figure it out myself as I was coming through there every day. And I could understand, you know, the additional, you know, safety is always going to be where my number one thing falls. And I don't really want them seeing a sign at the last second hitting that exit where a few feet could help make it a safer transition, so. Uh, I, where I understand the consistency, I don't have an issue with the sign portion of it.
I do have some other questions, but I'll wait till James finishes.
Uh, I have one more question, but go ahead, it may be the question I have, but go ahead, Scott.
Why don't you go ahead, James?
Uh, well, the other thing I was, um, wondering about is, as us doing this increasing, um, the number of trucks and, and the activity that's been going on with the hotel and talking with some of the police departments, is there a way that we can kind of, I know we talked about the fence, is that going to be kind of separating that all the way down where there's not traffic going back and forth across, across there?
Yes, we, uh, our, our biggest concern was foot traffic, so, uh, we wanted to eliminate people going back and forth, uh, between the hotel or the apartment and, uh, especially the truck parking area. Now, obviously, if people want to do it, they're going to do it.
Of course.
But, but it, just putting up physical barriers like fences certainly helps, and I believe there's some landscaping along there too, so even in the spots where you've got the, uh, decorative metal, um, you can see through there, which, you know, I, I, I think ultimately helps the situation. And then if, if we have good lighting around there, um, I, I think that helps as well. We're trying to force pedestrians up towards the front where they have to walk around the fence so that they are easily seen walking from the hotel across the driveway to the back, if that's what they're doing. At least, you know, people can put eyeballs on them and, and that's sometimes just as big as a deterrent as anything. Uh, so that was our intent as staff and trying to make some of those comments, make sure that we are limiting and discouraging pedestrian activity between two sites.
Seems like something the business would probably want to, so it's probably both sides of that.
Oh, go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Alshimi wants to speak.
I've been almost living quite forty years here in Red Oak, so, one of my kids was born in Red Oak, so that, there was like one, two years old. Uh, this is the main for sure, so we probably have a security guard every night and probably just to monitor this expression for safety.
Thanks. That makes sense, knowing the business owners, it's just kind of the, kind of business they run.
Did, did you hear that, James? The, the owner was mentioning that they're, they're looking at having a security guard on site, uh, in the evening and at night, trying to address some of those concerns as well.
Okay.
Was, was that it, James? You had these three items, is that pretty much it?
Uh, that's pretty much it, yes.
Yeah. God, I mentioned he had some items.
Yeah, uh, well, I'm, first, I'm going to date myself because I used to go to that truck stop when I first started working there in nineteen eighty-something, okay? Way back, way back. Um, and I, I'm excited about the updates and, and what, what it's going to become. Uh, I was there when it burnt many, many, many years ago when it was Charlie's Restaurant, long stories, but, um, so I, I'm really excited about the whole project, I, just the whole outlook. I, I did like the slide that said gas two thirty-eight, so if you could go back to that one, I'll, I'll go for it right now. Uh, however, I doubt that's going to happen, so I'm going to pass that one on. Uh, but I was watching, I was watching really closely. Uh, the only concern that I have out of all of the project, and I, I live close by there, I do pass there every single day, uh, coming home from work, uh, my mother sends me up for fried pies way too often, so, uh, I'm, I'm there a lot, I know that, I know the area. The concern I have is the truck repair, uh, shop, and it was really more of the distance from the residence. Uh, I, I was trying to get it in my head today as I drove by there, how, how close that is or how far it is from the, the street that runs back and the residents can, somebody helped me kind of visualize that a little bit. Uh, and it was a noise, more a noise concern than anything. Building didn't bother me at all, or the, or the repair, uh, yes, sir.
So, truck repair shop is more, sort of like life repair work?
Okay.
Oil change, tires, things like this? And it's only operating during regular business hours?
Okay.
So it's not going to be throughout the night like this? Um, and there really is sound, and when, you know, maybe, uh, the air guns where they blow enough stuff, so it's basically, you know, and they have the property that the city owns kind of separating everything and we're going to have to, as we stated, the, uh, main street wall separating, that should help out as well.
Great. What, what's the height of the main street wall?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. Well, you, you answered a lot of it right there because I was envisioning an overnight repair, uh, things of that nature, which. Okay.
It won't be, it won't be crazy, you know? Um, and again, it's not like they're all calling the entrance.
Which are very much like the mechanic.
That, that, that helps a lot, that helps a lot. Uh, other, other than that, Leroy, I, you know, I, I have the same concerns as James as far as traffic because I, I do travel that area, but situation is there and, and it's being made better, uh, to, in my eyes, with this project than it is today. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm really pretty excited about this one, actually.
Um, the only thing I have to add is, um, God, I remember when they built the truck stop originally because I was in Red Oak, so anyway. Um, I am excited as well about the improvement, but my main concern is I also live in that neighborhood right behind it as well, is the noise. And you can hear the trucks running at night and it's amazing how much leaves on trees provide insulation from noise. So I want it gets to be fall and winter, you can hear the trucks running, setting today in that parking lot, in the evening if you're setting outside on the patio. So my concern is increasing the number of parking spots is going to increase the noise level. Um, so that, that is one concern I do have about, um, expanding what is currently there today. But I do appreciate, I'm also in that store quite a bit, so I do appreciate the improvement. Go ahead, James, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, and I want to make it clear, it's not that I don't want to see this, I also live right there. Is there a possibility of that wall going up another foot or so? Because as Kim say, I'm closer to the store than she is and we do get some of that noise. So if we can buffer that up some, or like she said, with trees, I think that would be a plus. And we just have to work, figure out what we're going to do with the traffic as it increases.
We're talking about a fence on that, uh, east side, right?
Well, I thought, I thought we were talking about a six-foot wall.
That's on the, that's on the south side, James, the, the wall and the metal, uh, decorative fencing, but the east side's going to have the chain link dark spray painted or whatever.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's obviously not going to attenuate much the noise.
No, okay. Um, mm.
As you mentioned, trees might be an option or something that might help, uh, something with, that would have its leaves year round or something, a pine tree or something, or?
Or maybe a cedar fence or something, I don't know.
I may add that currently, as you all know, that area is back, uh, and so there's not a fairly professional maintained landscaping kind of around the edge. Trying to make sure you don't turn off, it's literally like circles by landscaping, and so one, of course, visual, two, of course, is sound. Um, and so, you know, uh, on, on, on the east side now, we would be having that side actual kind of maintained scrubbing and landscaping at least, uh, because now that entire park will be developed, so now you're actually going to have more of a natural wall, so to speak, than what is present there, just landscape hopefully, uh, with this.
How many trucks do you typically have there today or that, that sit there overnight in, in the parking lot, right?
Uh, we have anywhere, so, we have thirty-one parks in this, but there's a lot of.
Okay.
Asset, so we probably need to bring in forty, so adding more to be two. Yeah, I remember the final counting down. So we really wanted to just add eight, so that way we're not muddying up great parking and dirt, because it's really hard to get those guys. And we thought by adding more parking, we also avoid them parking down by the docks or, you know, next to the lake or the fire.
Staff, is, is there a way that we can, like, put more landscaping or something there to kind of buffer that sound on that east side?
Uh, certainly be a, a suggestion you could make as part of your motion.
Yeah, I, I think we should look at trying to do something solid there, maybe not necessarily masonry or, or either cedar or something, more landscaping to kind of buffer that sound because as Kim said, when it gets cold and there's no leaves, you know? That would be my really own concern then.
Well, then you, you'd probably want to, I mean, if, if your, if your goal is to try to mitigate some of the noise, uh, with some kind of landscaping, then I would advise you consider something that is probably more like a holly, an evergreen fifteen-foot growing type shrub. And to have those wherever you think you, you need them, uh, because that's going to do more for you obviously than just the normal tree.
Right.
You'd be looking at, deterred some kind of dense evergreen holly, twelve to fifteen foot range, uh, type shrubbery along, um, I, I guess that eastern border, uh, the way they position the repair facility, I mean, that essentially functions like a bit of a wall, by the way.
Well, yeah, I was just thinking back towards the south of that, where the residents and our, yeah, back there, especially there, yeah.
Okay, so just the parking area, basically, and?
Yes.
It sounds like, okay, basically, it sounds like something, I guess, if we drew an imaginary line to the southern edge of the repair facility down to the southeast corner of that.
Correct.
I would say you want to take into consideration what they had mentioned is that they were possibly thinking of doing a truck repair and they just wanted to get entitled for it, so you may want to go ahead and take into consideration that, while they're certainly probably moving forward with the, the parking first, so, and don't want to be too words in your mouth, but, uh, you may want to consider just going up the whole length if, if what you said was true, that they weren't going to go ahead and do the truck repair right away.
Right, I mean, that's fine, can we approve it? And if there is going to be a facility built later, that it be in the P D or a provision that it would have to include the landscaping that we're talking about today?
Well, I guess, uh, I'm correct in this, understand your point, but I think the thing is, if they're just entiling it for now, they don't have to build it, then you have the gap, so you may want to then require that the shrubbery still go all the way up, uh, maybe to where they have already gotten like a gate being shown.
Okay, perfect.
So that way, whether they do the building or not, uh, because even if, uh, you know, I don't know what y'all may or may not do, or what council may or may not do, but, um, it's in theory, if the, uh, repair shop were to not be approved or something like that, you still want probably that shrubbery then if y'all are hearing the noise of idling trucks now.
Yeah, because the trucks are going to be running regardless, yeah. Okay, I can go with that. What do you think, Kim?
Are we concerned about idling noise in the repair shop? Are we concerned about idling noise in the parking spots?
Well, it's the parking spots now because there's no truck spot there, but you can hear it now at some times.
Okay, so we're not really too concerned about the repair shop as much? That's going to be a daytime thing that they just do like mechanic work? We're not too worried about the trucks making noise there? So if they want to add those hollies or something along, uh, along the, uh, the eastern edge corner, uh, where those parking, uh, lines are listed here, would that be sufficient for what we're talking about?
Yes, for me, yes.
Red area you're seeing?
There, yes.
Showing what I thought I heard.
I'm looking at this gray area.
Very correct. Yeah, I'll, I'll just tell them what's already showing plus the area that's not showing.
Yeah, yeah, there it is. I was looking at that lower area behind where those spots are, the corner.
The lower area is already the main street wall outside of.
Like, go on, go on that north from there, putting those hollies along the, the parking area, or you want to go all the way up to the, uh, shop area, that we are?
Going up to where the existing, or where they're showing additional landscaping.
Okay.
That, that's what you just drew. That red line represents the thicker holly. I mean, I draw the line wherever you want it.
I'm just saying, it sounds like the concern is the parking area, not the, uh, construction and the maintenance area, but if y'all like.
Right, but, uh, the, so there's truck parking on the other side of the, the ma, the, the repair shop and the thought of.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If the repair shop doesn't get built right away.
I see what you're saying.
There'll still be idling trucks.
I wasn't looking over there.
Correct, correct. Correct, correct.
I follow you. Okay, that makes sense. I'm sorry about that. I wasn't looking, I was focused on that shop.
Yes. Is Mr. Mohammed still there?
Yes.
Yes, they're all here.
They're, they're, they're all, they're all here, James.
I just, I just want to say that I am looking forward to this. I am a little bit um disheartened. Uh, I think Texas Best Smokehouse would have been better than Wendy's, but we'll take that.
Well, we'll try to take another compliment, but Red Oak, I was trying to affect the professional cows kind of wrong. Not today, Mary dot com will be thinking about Texas Special Cow Red Oak. So maybe, maybe one.
The other up question I have is, are we concerned about pollution from the trucks idling there if they're sitting there for twenty-four hours and we're increasing it from thirty to fifty? But it sounds like you have thirty or forty of them sitting there now. They're just some sitting on the gravel parking lot?
Yeah, so. That's probably five, first next day, good daytime, the front is solar in that corner on the northwest side, full of cars. And that's it, what it is, is people who live nearby who are.
Parking.
So it's not that we're really increasing the pollution, there's just having a place to park and space that's let out, that, you know, it's somewhere that they can call their home away from home.
Okay.
Yes, there are seven nights to sleep there, but a lot of the local guys who, you know, work them today, so.
What are we looking at as far as like construction time? And the reason I ask is when the current parking was added, we had tons of trucks parked over where the lake is, and we had to put signs up because we had trucks over there all day, all night. Do we know, we have an estimated timeframe of that being uh or how would that work in phases as far as it disrupting your current truckers that are coming there now? And would there be, they would still be able to park there as the remodeling is being done?
Correct and wrong, but everything is there, thanks, right, with adding on. So just parking and all that stuff stays where it is, don't use it for problems. Uh, it's just we're expanding and adding on. Maybe try to use a lane or two, you know, just kind of maybe move all day foot and stuff, but still most parts.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Okay.
I mean, you know, pretty converted on the city at the time.
So they won't lose any parking space as far as, they still will be able to park where they are during the remodel and the, and the refresh, right?
Yes.
Okay, right.
Does that sound something like you guys would be okay with putting hollies or something along the, the eastern side just to kind of mitigate the noise of the additional uh truck parking?
Yeah, I think I know.
Uh, it just sounds like something you would be for. Uh, it would be cheaper than a masonry hall for sure. And uh.
Yes.
That's just additional um help for residents concerned. Okay. There you go. Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I can just speak for myself. Um, I know we have several subways in town, but this is my favorite subway. And that's okay. I mean, I've got other subways, and, and Wendy's is going to be a huge addition. I think, I think Wendy's is, is something that a lot of people I know are interested in. And the bathrooms at this place are clean. You would never know that it was a truck stop or whatever. You, if you go to this bathroom, smells good, it's clean. I mean, they have these truck, these buses come through, you know, they're gone in an hour and then they clean it up. And it's, never know they were even there. The, the business they do is amazing. So I think it's a, it's a great um family, it's a great business, it's a great asset to Red Oak. Uh, it really, it really represents Red Oak in a good way for people passing through and for residents.
Well, the staff there knows it for sure because I go there a lot. It's great staff there too.
You can see that with all the employees, they're just, they're just like that. Yeah, they, they all, they all, I tell them they all do a great job there.
Uh, I, and I, I'll just echo that. Both families, of course, we worked a lot as a council with your dad, your dad, and I know he's very proud. Uh, but uh just the, the partnership and, and everything that, that both these families have, have, have made with the city has, has been very high quality. And that's something we don't always get to see is the quality going in. Uh, I believe it's going to be a, a, a great quality and a great asset uh and very much uh massive for the city of Red Oak. So thank you, guys.
Go the both ways. Happy to be here, love you too. We appreciate it.
Any more concerns or discussions? I know we talked about the sign. Uh, I'm fine with the sign. I understand the reasoning behind it. They're not just trying to show off, they're trying to um help themselves out of a difficult situation when it comes to their location and the changes that have happened to the roads. And it looks like a standard sign that you would see at any, when you're traveling. We're not used to seeing it here because we're not traveling that way, but if someone's traveling through, I could see them seeing a sign like that if they didn't live here. Almost like a stop sign or something, hey, come, come here.
Brian, do we need to add any verbiage to the, the motion on the uh landscaping that we discussed, or is?
Yeah, it's, it's over satisfied with everything and just wanted to add the evergreen shrubs and simply, I think you just need to say as proposed with the addition of the evergreen shrubs that's shown on the screen. So I think we would just, so you know, we would just work with their landscape architect to determine what those would be. And hopefully, maybe we can get that turned around fast enough for, for a council that's not, it may be something that that just has to. Or the exact species of council.
You could go to Fox Hollow and see some really nice hollies along Fox Hollow Drive, at least ten feet or eight feet tall.
I, I really liked the way that Brian just uh put that in the, in the form of a motion. So uh had, since he's got that all written down over there, uh if there's no other discussion, I would move, we approve item he is presenting.
Scott made a motion to approve with the language that Brian had mentioned with the hollies are evergreen. We have a second?
I'll second it.
And Kim seconds that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And no opposed, this item is approved. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, and thank you, Mr. Hashimi, and thank you, everybody, for coming in. We have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Kim makes the motion, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming out.
Exactly, everybody, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. And thank you, staff. We appreciate the staff as well. They are definitely fun to work with. Thanks for joining us, James.
All right.
Thanks, James. Safe travels.
Thank you.
We'll see you traveling too, somewhere fun.
Excellent job, sir.
On a town somewhere to a conference.